We're all meeting in order at 7:39. Do the roll call. I show Cheryl Brandy Sneed, I show Julie Stauffer, I show George Knoll, I show myself, Susan Umball, Derek Jones, and Lisa Malining for Treasury. Stand and do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes for November 2nd, 2016, February session.
Can we read some paragraph on the old library?
Make a motion to accept the minutes, deleting the paragraph about the old library.
Second.
A motion and a second. Accept the minutes. Add with the old library section deleted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Citizens' input. Mark Umball.
How about Jerry Chavis?
Jerry Chavis.
I think Mark is doing what I would like to be doing right about now for our year today. So I have MCDTC report for the period of October 1st to the 14th, which is today. Kind of some highlights, only that's still yours, which is today. With regards to marketing, a couple items I want to bring to your attention will be submitted on behalf of business attractions. This is actually bringing new businesses in. Proposal is somebody out there is looking for a site. We put three proposals out during that period of time, and each three of the proposals were targeting specifically Argus. So everything that we talk about today is just Argus-centric, if that makes sense. We actually conducted two site tours. Site tour is when somebody from outside the area is actually looking at the location, grounds and times and times. We had two site tours. I do want to give my thanks to the city staff or town staff with regards to getting information on a timely basis. Sometimes these proposals, they wanted today, sometimes, most times yesterday, so they responded very timely with regards to some information. Sometimes that information also includes rates based upon parameters. So once again, it's not only marketing, it takes a number of different avenues. Some of that is the bottom line, where are the advantages? That's why you guys passed your incentive policy, if you will. Harvest infrastructure, we're taking a look at the infrastructure extension over to the industrial park. We've had several conversations with Mr. Berros, and it's nice to hear that he's doing quite well. And then, you know, I think if you saw the pilot last Thursday, you would have seen, or Wednesday, can't remember which day, you would have seen a, what is for all intensive purposes, a marketing internal to the community of what has gone on relative to economic development. I think several members here were interviewed by Nancy Tyree, and they gave us a half-page spread. So if you haven't seen it, call the office, we'll send you a copy. Very well done. Product development is actually improving things, if you will, you know, product, our land, buildings and whatnot. So the work at MCDTC helped the town, specifically with the Speedway, met with the appraiser, submitted the bid on that particular date, that's noted. Regarding the Shell building, we've majority building, we've had several conversations in design, looking at specific location, looking at cost. I just received today what their estimate is, which is a little bit below what I originally had thought relative to our conversations with regards to that project. So we're going to go back and find to them. My hope is, and my goal is, that we can wrap that cost, wrap the cost of extension of the public infrastructure, we're talking about trunk infrastructure, infrastructure, roads, water and sewer into that cost, still at the same price point. So trying to get the biggest bang for our dollars as we go forward with that project. Third item here is marketing video, you guys saw that. Since we last met and we unveiled that, I heard today that there was, how many hits?
1300.
1300 hits with the YouTube video, it was like within two days, 600 hits. One of those hits caused inquiry by Inside Indiana, I don't know if you know, that TV magazine version, it's Gary Dick, it's filmed out of Indy, and he does kind of a composite of economic development successes and activities around the state. We invited Susanna and myself to go down and tape this segment. It was very short and sweet, but opposed to speak to what is unique about that approach, and that's what he commented on. You want to mention anything about the tape?
Didn't take that long. The pre-interview took longer than the actual tape. And he summarized about Chavis.
Yeah, a lot of my board members have been those individuals that have contact or have a lot of conversations or direct dialogue with folks from Indy, quite impressed. They congratulated you. Today, we had the County Development for the Future, we showed that at the end of the meeting. I think you guys got a round of applause from about 41 people who were at that meeting. Comprehensive plan, workshop was conducted, and I believe relative to the workshop, there was about 90 individuals that had responded to the survey, so that actually speaks well of the town and gives some other dialogue and further input relative to goals and objectives, if you will. I think we have a scheduled meeting later on this month, and we're on target to have a final product, I'm going to say sometime in February. So County Development for the Future, tracking sheets, we visit with staff and others relative to where are the accomplishments, where are the economic development priorities for this town. We convey those at a meeting that occurred today. Next meeting is scheduled for November the 16th, no, February the 16th. That's right. Yeah. We're in November, Jerry. Internal Communications, just conducted an executive meeting relative to the Speedway conversation. Was attended in October, a meeting and gave the report for MCDTC. So with regards to that, you have your report, and I'll take any questions, which you might have.
Not my first time, not my best time. Thank you, Derek.
Yeah, and if you have any questions, feel free to give them a call. Sometimes they come up after I'm done, general conversation or whatever. If you don't have any questions for me, I'm going to leave. Thank you very much.
Whole business. Attorney report.
A few things. First, just to remind you, I think I'd sent maybe a week or so ago, an email concerning the research on the old library and the public works project, and basically it would seem we've got to get three quotes if we're going to move that thing forward to have that demolished or removed. But I really think the next real step for the council or committee or somebody is basically develop really what the plans and specifications are going to be, meaning does everything get removed, or you're putting concrete back down, and you're just taking off, you know, what exactly is that we're going to have done. But once you know exactly what it is you're going to have done, I think we've spelled out the steps there, in terms of how to get that bid out, and it's not that complicated given the amount that we're looking at, so that's good. The other thing, I'm going to leave the farm resolution for last, or the farm ground lease. If you remember, we have been talking about this REMC joint petition, and I've worked back and forth with the attorney that's representing REMC and got it to a point where I'm comfortable with it. We tweaked a few things in there, I did, she was agreeable to that. Jamie was on the email, and he's since gotten back to me, he's looked at this and he's comfortable with it. There's two maps that are attached to that joint petition that really kind of tell the story, if you will. We're just calling Heritage Street the dividing line, which has been a de facto dividing line for quite some time, and we're going to do a little swap out by the solar park, but we will have the exclusive jurisdiction over that entire parcel, and we're going to be giving up a parcel that was already serviced by REMC. So we're really not losing anything out of this deal at all. Kind of the status quo, they're going to affirm with the I U R C. What we need to do this evening, and I can tell you also that REMC met Monday, I've got their signature on this document, so they've obviously approved it as well. We need for you folks to approve that, if that's your pleasure, and get it signed so I can get it back down to Erin, so she can file that with the I U R C. So we do need action on that, and I'll let you guys act on that before I move on.
What do you want to call it?
Petition?
It's called a verified joint petition to modify the service area boundaries. What we would need to be a motion to approve, signing and executing that document.
I'll make that motion. I'll say it.
Yeah, a motion and a second to approve the signing of the joint petition with REMC. Is that good?
Yes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries.
Okay. I'll leave that, I need to take that back with me, but there's a few places for Dustin to sign and pass. All right, then that takes us to the resolution for the farm lease, and I think your copy in here, yes, has a number, it's 2016-10. We just had our public hearing regarding the leasing of this grant, and again, I think most of you were here, but not doing anything different regarding the farm ground this year, it's still a one-year lease. Bids need to be submitted, I think it's by December the 19th, by the close of business here at the clerk treasurer's office. We would open bids on December 21. And the way this works, folks, is that basically you've got the resolution that's the first page, the last two pages are basically the substance of what would be published in the pilot, so that everybody is on notice, okay, we need to get our bids in here by the 19th of December. And if you're free, let anybody else know that you think might have an interest, but they need to have a signed, sealed, written bid, submit to the town before December the 19th is the way that this is spelled out. So we would need a motion to approve that resolution with those terms specifications attached.
Make that motion to accept the resolution 2016-10 with attachments.
Second.
A motion and a second to accept the resolution 2016-10 with the attached lease. Any further discussion?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Got the original there, Dustin? You got the original there?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll need to, I'd like to take that with you too, so I can, get that published. Folks, that's all I had for the evening.
I move to accept the attorney's report.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to accept the report.
Attorney report, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Derek. Board openings, Marshall County Tourism Planning Commission redevelopment. Is this the one?
Yep.
And then BZI, if you're interested, submit your letter to Lisa. Any other old business? Moving on, new business, employee health insurance. Just had a workshop about this, so. Make a motion that we go with Anthem quote 2 on health and Anthem quote 1 on dental, and Anthem's quote on vision.
I'll second that.
With the employee spend 10% of the health insurance.
Got a motion and a second. Everything in Georgia is so.
Any further discussion on it? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Salary ordinance 2017.
We can take that, we're tabling that, right?
Actually, we're going to do 2017. We're going to table the whole thing, we're going to make a decision. Make a motion to amend ordinance 2015-11, 2016 salary ordinance, change Harrison Parton from apprentice lineman to labor at a rate of $15 per hour, and add line item general labor, 13 to 13.50 is $15 per hour.
That's just forceful. This is a fix this year.
Fix this year, should have always said the year.
Got a motion and a second to amend salary ordinance 2015-11, 2016 salary ordinance. Any further discussion?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And then Lisa's going to make up a new ordinance, so. Cell phone stipend. Take it away. For the 2016-12, it's an ordinance, and then the employees' cell phone stipends. Hold on, we'll go back to take hands.
Do you want me to explain it?
No, I can read it.
Okay.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Back in 2010, we agreed to give cell phone stipends of $60 a month to all, to the town employees listed in this section. So there were eight town employees that were entitled, plus the Argus Police Department, which we have not done that in a long time, we've paid for their cell phones. So they were supposed to be getting $60 a month, but we paid for their cell phones, and I couldn't find anything that reversed that. But with the change in Harrison's title, and with us hiring a new employee, they are not covered on this cell phone ordinance. There was another ordinance that did cover Todd as far as being a park employee, I did not print that one out because it just covers Todd. It just says that Todd, that being a full-time park employee gets a cell phone stipend. So I would like to change it to read that all full-time employees receive the cell phone stipend, based on the fact that I was told that that's how. When I inquired from different people, they said that it should include all full-time Some of the part-timers have cell phones, but I don't know if you want to include part-timers also, that's your choice. Or if you just want to add a couple more to the original ordinance, I can rewrite it to read that it, you know, I can add 9 and 10, but we do have to change it to where the police department, their cell phones are paid, that ordinance, this ordinance does that also. The 2016-12, that reads in there that the police officers, the only exception to the rule are the full-time police officers, since the town will provide them with a cell phone, and they shall not receive this stipend.
Are you going to take it all in, we can turn our cell phones off?
You hot, you got a brand new phone.
Would you say turn it off or not use them?
To turn them in.
You know, I did not solve this.
No, you're fine.
But it was an ordinance back in 2014.
Really?
Kind of comes in January 14. Or stipend? That.
But or stipend? Right. No cell phone.
We got rid of the police department, and we put in full-time employees of the park. I don't know if that addresses all your concerns, but I want to make sure you know.
Well, I think this is the one that they amended to include Todd, right?
Well, it's not Todd, it's full-time employees of the park.
Of the park, yeah. So this is the one that they passed that gave the park employee the $60 as well as the rest? But isn't this one, because this didn't supersede it?
Well, what we did was, I think if you look, that's what was originally passed in 2010.
Right.
A2 read all officers at Argus Police Department. Well, we took out, we changed A2 to get rid of the police department, and then we substituted full-time president of the park department. Again, I don't know if this accomplishes everything that you or anybody else wants to do, but I just want you to be aware of that ordinance.
Yeah, I read that as it include, it then included the park department, full-time employees. What I fell back on is with Harrison not being a senior lineman or a lineman anymore, and he doesn't fall under any of the eight categories that are, you know, and he needs a cell phone. And then we're hiring a general laborer, and that is not included in these eight that is on the original. So I, if I write it as all full-time employees, the park employees, plus, you know, everybody gets it. Now, we do have a couple of part-time employees that do use their cell phones, so I don't know how you want to categorize that. I'm just throwing that out.
If you just like to work, you must have a phone, you'd have to pay for it.
Yeah.
I agree.
I say all full-time employees.
Because then we're going to run into this when we go to the on-call thing, so. Yeah. We're going to have to have something.
So the only, the only one that would be added would be your general laborers, which would then be Harrison and the part-timer, and according to this, Candy does not get one either. And she is the only other full-time employee. And she uses her cell phone all the time to go out to the cemetery and take pictures, to call in and ask for certain grave sites, to, you know what I mean? Talking to Jamie when he's out, you know, so I'm just saying that it's, there are three people that are not included on the original cell phone stipend, so it was just a rough draft or something. We have to do something because otherwise the people that we're hiring in and Harrison will not get one next month.
I don't have a problem with full-time employees, you've got along with it, it's a good, it is a convenience for all of, I should say, convenience, it's a used tool.
That's it.
The way we are, since we don't have the radios that work anymore, and the trucks, so it's, we just can't take home.
As far as part-time, though, I don't.
I wouldn't say part-time.
The four things.
We're. Since it says all full-time employees, does that include Candy then? Yes.
I'm sorry?
Line one says all full-time employees.
Yes.
Does that include Candy then?
It will.
Yeah, okay.
But I'm just being very honest on who it's going to include.
And 2016-12 then would include her.
Right.
Was that, you had, what was that, you were just showing down there that little?
What, there was, there was an ordinance, George, from back in 2014. The original ordinance included the police department, and it didn't include full-time employees of the park board. Well, in 2014, we changed that to get rid of the police department, and we added, substituted full-time employees of the park department. And I was just making sure Lisa was aware that that ordinance was activated. I wasn't sure exactly what the goal was here, but I think I'm getting it now, and you would still need to have her ordinance to accomplish, to enable full-time employees to have a cell phone stipend.
And then this one would supersede those two, right?
Yes.
Because.
It says so.
Yeah, because it says so. I made the motion that all full-time employees.
Just need to pass ordinance.
Oh, that we pass ordinance 2016-12. Second.
Got a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2016-12.
Oh, first reading? We're all readings. You got suspended rules, you're going to pass it all?
Ah, yeah, okay, so we'll back up. Suspend the whole thing.
Yes, I would like to do so.
Pass it on all three readings?
I would like to pass it on all three readings. Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to suspend rules and pass ordinance 2016-12 on all three readings. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
You got to do it in the headlight, will you?
Any other new business? Department head reports, police department.
Police.
Go ahead. We're ready.
You should have my report in the back there. Just real quick on the numbers, just highlight a couple, eight criminal arrests from the month. 79 traffic warnings from, we gave 24 traffic arrests from, 15 criminal investigations. And a couple other things, Miles Scott, he's going through the FTO process right now, he's doing really good, and he'll be done with it pretty soon, and he's going to go to the academy, we got it scheduled for March 3rd, which is, which is really good. The other thing I had was the active shooter, the town, I have an active shooter class set up for the town employees, November 30th, what time was it, was it 2?
Like 1:30.
1:30. I don't know if you guys were able to attend that, or I don't know, it's up to you, all. The police department will be doing its own active shooter after that, because we're going to be doing, shooting each other with airsoft guns. The last thing I had was, you got the quotes for the Dodge Charger, I was just wanting to get it, go ahead to. I was just wanting to get a, go ahead to, go ahead and order it. If you could see, I think the Town and Country one was like four or $500 cheaper, I believe. I got one from Town and Country, one from Mike Anderson's. So I guess I just need to go ahead and order it. And it was like under $25,000, which is under the, the one from Town and Country. So I think we budgeted 25. And that's with a lot of, the Town and Country one with a lot of the lights and stuff hooked up, but some of it's ready to go, basically. Twenty-four, $494. Then the other one, Mike Anderson's, was 25 something. It's on the very back page of the one George has.
Took the case now?
Well, I was looking at it this way, I don't like, I think that the new one, I don't... A couple of the guys wanted, they, they don't want to drive it. So we kind of signed vehicles. They, they want to stay with the truck, they like the truck. And I do not want the, the younger guys in the Charger because it's... I don't want someone, it's, it's fast. And I don't want them doing something... Well, I mean, if that thing runs 180 miles, the new guy's going to run 180 miles an hour and I don't want that, so... Start to try to get involved. So I'm thinking, I would probably, if they want to drive the truck, I'd probably drive the, the new vehicle more often. It's just, it's handier, especially when they're going to different things and they're working and... And it's all-wheel drive too, it's not going to be... I got a quote for an SUV for Ford, it's, it's like 2,900 or 29,000. That's without the, the trade-in, but I don't, I don't know if we'd... It's probably a better vehicle for the money and everything, but I don't know if we need another SUV. That's just me, but I guess I got it here if you guys want to see it, but... It's up to you.
So which one do you want?
The one at Town and Country, I think's the best.
Move to be allow, I'll, I'll just remote and go ahead and purchase the quote from Town and Country or Country Auto, whatever my call. I'll second.
Got a motion, a second to allow Chief Bowman to purchase used white car from Henry Auto. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Yeah, that, this is awkwardly, that teacher that wanted to...
No, you can ignore that, sorry. I got an email today that they are no longer doing it, so I had it in your packets. I apologize. I do have one thing I need to ask about.
Can we finish the, the front heads? That's all I have. All right, thank you, George. Utility?
You should have my report, the wastewater and... Seems like since the last meeting, quite a bit's happened. But some things good too. Walking trail finally got done after how many months? It looks fantastic. The monument uptown's done, that again looks good. So, and we've doing well on picking up leaves too. So I think this should be the big week and after that it should be kind of downhill, so hopefully we can recruit. Just short, a lot of help lately, so we're doing what we can. Thanks.
Got a date on Jim's route?
The polls are up, I'm hoping to start decorations next week. So I've, I've got to run some cables and stuff over there. I got to figure out how that's going to work across the road still, so... Once I get that figured out, it'll be easy, I think. Yeah.
What about the polls?
Well, I don't know that we can do those. I think we can do them permanently through the state. Now, you don't think that's going to even apply for you, so that may not happen this year. What's that?
You said it applied for, you just hadn't got it.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we haven't got it yet, so maybe next year, but as far as the uptown, we'll get, we'll get all that done. The other thing we talked about was putting in another electric employee, maybe in February. I may want to move that up. We'll kind of see where we're at, so... Yeah, Jim's home, he got home today, he's, he's doing good. You'll probably see him around here shortly.
Knowing him, I'd be moral.
All right, fire DMS. You have my report there.
He said that's it.
That's it?
Thanks. Give me none of that.
What you got for fire? Fire department's going to start looking at washing machine, door speaker. And a couple detectors for different gases, I guess you want to call it. We're going to try to work on some ramps, but we may be coming back asking for a percentage to match in the town if possible. Not sure why that, but depends on what the grant covers. So just a heads up. Steven Mark?
Lisa, what do you want to bring up?
I have, we have a CD that is maturing as of December 2nd and I just got it in mail. We have interest of $7,771.24 that I need to know if you want to reinvest or do you want it brought out into our checking account and just reinvest the main balance that was invested? Does that make sense?
How long was it in for?
A year. But it says it will mature on 12/2 of 2016. Interest may not be paid after maturity, so we need to really... And because it's going to mature on 12/2 and we don't have another meeting until 12/7, I, I had to slip it in and decide what we're going to do with it. You just started these investments last year.
I think, didn't, I'm sorry, but didn't we meet with them? They were going to kind of advise us what we wanted to do?
With Ambar and Associates?
Because we were setting them up where they were supposed to mature so often, so...
And I understand that I...
Did this one renew for a year or is it, do we go four years within?
This one is for a year.
Well, but when we renew it? Because we were setting them up on a ladder.
Right. I, I will admit, I just got this in, so I did not have time to talk to Ambar and Associates yet, but I thought if I could get your opinions on the interest, the balance of it, we know we've already had it invested, so I just needed to know what you wanted with the interest. That way when Ambar does advise either way, I at least know that I have permission to invest it. Does that make sense?
Make a motion to put the interest back in and roll it over for another year?
Second.
Got a motion, a second to reinvest the interest on the CD for another year? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Make a motion to accept department head reports.
Second. Got a motion, a second to accept the department head report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Claims 1299 through 1352.
On the total docket for November the 16th, 2016 is $120,734.92. The top five claims are, number one is selective insurance company, which is our town liability policy, was $38,316. Claim number two was payroll number 22 for $32,853.85. Number three was Indiana Department of Revenue sales tax for $8,821.39. Claim number four was the Federal Reserve at $6,867.42. Claim number, or, or, the fifth claim is Vermeer at $3,800. Total top five claims is $90,658.66 and that is 75% of the total docket.
For underground utilities, for locating electric lines, water lines, all that stuff underground.
We never had any of that.
We had one, but it's 20 years old.
Okay.
And I've been having trouble with it, so we'll start looking at a new one.
Okay, did you get control rooms for this thing out here?
Yes. That was another thing that we probably have to discuss at a later time, so... Like next year's budget.
Oh, come on.
No, it's, it's just breaking.
We're going to get you those.
It's turned off. On its own. The parts to fix it and...
The suction cups.
It's adequate already. It's like everything else electronic. It's not really... Okay.
Yeah. That sounds exciting.
I'll make a motion to accept the claims for 1299 through 1352.
Second.
Got a motion, a second to accept the claims, 1299 through 1352. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'd just like to, before you adjourn, yes, thank Jamie for stepping up since Jim Pinoff and all the other employees for stepping up. I think you guys did pretty good for what you got, so we're going into it, so thanks.
Thank you.
The work is, like I said, the monument work. Everything you guys done has been top-notch, so... How close to play?
Can't.
Everybody, everybody's done an excellent job.
Yeah, we didn't have much to do then, but...
Well, I know, but still, the whole idea. You prepped it.
You prepped it.
You prepped it.
That's all pretty good.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion, a second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.